Thanks, Mr. Feinberg. Jen Sax is going to help me with this this evening. But I'm going to speak first about, you know, how we got where we are and what we're going to be looking at in terms of, you know, of moving forward. You know, at the, now, we'll go back. At the risk of repeating myself, but similar to what Antoinette asked earlier, you know, just to go over for people, there's been so much that's happening. And just to provide a reminder for folks of how we got to the point of, you know, where we are. Our board had several consecutive weeks of meetings throughout the summer, trying to determine what was the best way for us to, you know, to open school. And as we heard in some of the public comments this evening, yes, we had asked the board to take a vote on a hybrid opening. And within a week, then asked the board to look at the virtual opening. That is not a decision that was just, you know, made unilaterally. That is a decision that was made to bring forth that recommendation after August 14th, when the Chester County Health Department issued their guidance. And then in consultation with Dr. Brennan from the University of Pennsylvania and Dr. Rubin from CHOP, that guidance specifically stated that the Health Department recommends that public and private K-12 schools in Chester and Delaware Counties, in both of those counties, begin the academic year virtually and assess the ability to transition to a more in-person instructional model after October 9. I cannot speak to why some schools, you know, have chosen this path and others have not. We do know that all of the public schools in Delaware County are adhering to this guidance. Chester County serves as the health authority for those of us in Delaware County. So their guidance is guidance that we are going to give credibility and have it carry a lot of weight in the decisions that we will be making. The goal on the part of Chester County in making that recommendation is to ensure that community transmission is as low as possible before we engage in in-person models of instruction. They expressed concern over the spike that would, that they're predicting will occur after the Labor Day holiday. So, you know, with that, with that in mind, we took their advice to heart and began immediately to make our ongoing plans to switch to a virtual model. To echo Mr. Feinberg's comments up earlier tonight, we do appreciate very much hearing from our parents, hearing what the experience is like for our students. And we also appreciate, if you think back, almost every single message started off referencing the teacher and what the teacher is doing. We are most fortunate in our community to work with teachers who are so dedicated, so conscientious. All the learning that they engaged in over the summer and their professional development and the time they put in themselves above and beyond that to try to create an experience that was very different from the experience that students engaged in when they were, you know, learning remotely back in the spring. Teachers themselves did not want to replicate that model. They wanted a model that they can be proud of and a model that can provide the learning opportunities for students that we know are so important. And the feedback that we, you know, continue to get, we will share with teachers. Our curriculum folks will, you know, take a look at that feedback and help our teachers to look at the learning experiences that they are, that they're creating. The current model that we are in is, I've said a number of times, not a model that anyone would design or which, you know, would find themselves choosing if they needed to move that way. The decisions around when we transition are actually laid out for us in the Chester County Health Department Guidance, which is available on our website. And in the communication that I'm going to send home to families tomorrow, there are links embedded right in there to make it very easy. We don't just take people to the website. The link takes them right to the section of the website where they can see the data that I'm going to reference tonight. So the question is, you know, what are the metrics? We've been hearing a lot, what are the metrics? So let's move on and we'll take a look at what those metrics are. As we move to next slide, you'll be able to see this. The text that appears on here is not text that I have composed in any way. This is taken directly from the CHOP guidance, the guidance from Chester County Health Department. So what is it specifically that we're looking for? That's what people have asked about. And what we have been told, our look for's are weekly incidence rates that are approaching 10 per 100,000 people. So 10 incidence rates on a weekly basis for every 100,000 people. That the positivity rate, that we take a seven-day average, that that seven-day average decline, that it declines to a point where it's below 5%. Now, there's a combination also that we can look at. So maybe we meet one metric, but we don't meet the other. So what, you know, some of our questions. And I want to stop for a minute and say, when I attend those weekly meetings that still are being held, at which the medical professionals, representative from the Chester County Health Department also attend, it's when we ask our clarifying questions and ask for more information, that's usually when an update eventually comes out. So, and this is, you know, one of those examples where we're asking, well, what if you have the weekly incidence rate, but you don't have the positivity rate? Like, how can we get some guidance here so that we can make sense of that? If there is stable or declining incidents that are between 10 and 35 and the positivity rate is below 5%, that's when we can look to transition to a more in-person instructional model. When those, and when those thresholds have been met for three consecutive weeks. So where, when we look there, that's, as I said, from CHOP and from Chester County, where we look then at the chart that's appearing down there, that identifies for us if the community transmission is low, if it's moderate, if it's high, what are the metrics for the incident rate? And then you see the and/or, you know, little bit of a matrix there. When can you be in person? When can you be hybrid? When could you be either or depending on where those metrics are? So yes, there is a possibility to do some transitioning. And as we move on and look at the criteria, well, criteria for transitioning, when we transition, I want to go back, go to the other one. When we transition to a more in-person based model, the Chester County Health Department itself is recommending that it be phased in beginning with the younger grades. So that's not something that is unthought of, you know, unthinkable for people to look at some kind of a plan that would look at students, our youngest learners, students in our neediest learners, in our special ed population. And that was as recent as their September 1 guideline that was issued. That was a change that they made. It's not as restrictive as the language had previously been. So sometimes these wording changes are minor in terms of the quantity of words, but the meaning behind them can be significant. We felt very good about that change that was made at that point in time. So when we're looking at that data, keeping in mind what we need to look at the three-week period of time, we can be in that transition. So where are we now? Well, when you look at, and again, we're going, the direct link to this is right on our website. So you will be able, you've got access. This is public information. It's not information that's only available to school districts, is available to anybody on their website. So going back to August 7th, up to the most recent data that was published on August 28th. I don't know if I mentioned that it's published every Friday. My experience over the last four weeks watching for it, every Friday, you know, checking into that website, it's usually around 6 o'clock or after. So it really is towards the end of the day when it is posted. Now we have started to get our data for Haverford Township specific. That was at the request of the county superintendents. Can we start to see information just about our particular district? We will never get positivity in terms of the school districts. They will always just give positivity for at the county level. But we will have the incident rate so that we can take a look at that. How close are we, you know, to that in between, you know, in between 10 and 35 per 100,000? You can see right now, it's of last week, we were, our incident rate was 46.85, you know, per 100,000 people. Definitely down from where it was on August 21st. But we want to be mindful, look at what happened the week between August 14th and August 21st, where we had made a pretty good decrease from August 7th to the 14th. Then there was an increase back on, you know, August 21st. The positivity rate in the county is great in that it has continued to decrease. And the goal is that it moves in that direction. Going back to looking at that same chart that's on the bottom of the right-hand side here now, I identified for you, you know, where would you be between virtual and/or hybrid? Well, you want to take a look at the spread there. The incident rate, so then the per 100,000 people needs to be, it can be greater than 40, but it's got to be less than 80. And the positivity, it could be greater than 7%, but it's got to be less than 10%. And the way Dr. Rubin explains this when he's looking at it is, if you are at 75%, you know, 75 for your incident rate and you're at 9% for your test positivity, that's probably not a good indicator that you should be looking at moving right away to your hybrid model. You don't want to be at the upper end of that band, but you can be at lower end of one, higher end of another. And that would be when the board and the district would have a conversation, which one is going to be more important for us? You know, it's not going to be a clear-cut picture for us, but at least this gives us the trajectory that we are working in. The key critical point for us, the entire reason that the Chester County Health Department made this recommendation stems from their projection that there will be a spike after Labor Day. So these next three weeks of data, the first week being tomorrow, are going to be important weeks for us. You know, as we look at the September 4th, September 11th, and September 18th, I have those dates committed to memory. You know, getting the data for those three dates, we'll be populating our chart so that we can continue to, you know, continue to monitor that and take a look at it. At the meeting that occurred this week, Dr. Rubin did indicate that he is feeling more optimistic about our ability to look at bringing our youngest learners in before the October 12th, or, you know, before that October 9th timeframe. And I will say now, he's more concerned about high school. More concerned because of what we are seeing in colleges. And when you think about it, you know, some of our high school students are only about six months difference in age with some of the college students. So he is more concerned about the spike that could potentially be occurring when our high school students would be returning to school. All the more reason for us to take a look at beginning our transition with our youngest learners and our neediest population of special education students. So I have a recommendation that I would make moving forward is that we actually move our September 24th board meeting to Monday, September 21st. We will have the third data set on September 18th. And I'd like to be able to, you know, start taking a look at that. I will have the weekly meeting on Monday, that occurs on Monday mornings. I'd like to have our board meeting on that Monday evening where we can look at what is, you know, what are these four weeks of data like? Where do we fall within these metrics? It also gives us time if we wanted to then identify a date of bringing some of our youngest learners back, that we could get that communicated to, you know, to parents earlier than if we were meeting on, you know, on September 24th. With all of that being said, I can't stress enough that all of this hinges on those next three weeks of data. Everything hinges upon that. So I don't want to create the impression this evening that we feel very confident that we have no idea until we look at the data. And that will give us some indication of which direction we can move. We want to move in the direction that starts to bring our youngest students in. It makes sense to us to gradually bring students in instead of introducing 6,000, we are now 6,770-some students. And so, you know, introducing them all on one day into our school system, if we could do so gradually, and it seems that it would, you know, would make more sense with that. And we hope that the numbers will be at a point where we can do that. And then I also have to say, then we also need to talk, I will be able to discuss then, what are the criteria? What are the data that the Health Department will be looking at once we are open? How do we stay open? You know, what measures do we need to be extremely mindful of that will enable us to remain open? By the September 21st meeting, I'll also be able to report to you. Dr. Brennan continues to be extremely generous with his time and is going to be conducting two tabletop sessions with our administrators and nurses, you know, looking at this, you know, what if, what if a student presents this way? What if this occurs? So that our team feel that they're well-prepared for students returning to the building. You may remember Sarah Smathers. She's a parent within our community. She spoke at our board meeting. She also works at CHOP in infectious disease. Sarah has been extremely generous with her time as well, continues to work with us. She's providing training next week for some of our staff members. So we'll be able to report on that, those two events at that meeting as well. I'm going to stop now, Mr. Feinberg, before I move along to Jen, just in case there were some questions about this, because Jen's talking about the fun stuff.
We do have some questions. First up, Ari.
Can you go back to that slide, Dr. Ruchi, please? That spells out what incidence is? Because we have 612 cases. Weekly incidence rate, okay. And then is that number a percentage of the population?
I'm not sure what you're looking at in terms of 612.
Chester County Health Department website says that Haverford Township has 612 coronavirus cases, positive cases, 63 deaths among those cases. So I'm just trying to figure out what incidence, what that rate is, 10 per 100,000, and why we're at 40-something. I'm not able to slice those numbers yet. And it should be pretty easy for us because we only have 50,000 people.
Well, I can tell you the math, but I can't, this is not my, you know, these are not my data points, but I can tell you that incidence rates is calculated by dividing that total number of confirmed and probable cases by the population. And that's expressed as a rate per 100,000 people. That's how it's calculated.
Is the 600 number a total number, Ari? Because I think there is, isn't the incidence rate also just the last seven days?
Seven days, yes.
The 600 number might be total, like since March.
Right.
Whereas the incidence rate that's reflected here is just the last seven days of cases.
How do you get that information? On the Chester County website map for Delaware County, it just looks like by municipality, it only shows total.
Yeah, you want to go to that monitoring and protecting our progress? You want to go to that portion of the website? And then you will be able to find, that document link, has a link within it to specific school district incident rates.
Okay, not the data and maps for Delco.
Yeah, that's not as helpful as this newer piece that they're putting out.
And we'll be linking to the report, Dr. Ruchi, that you're referencing right from our website and from your email.
It is, that's on our website. Anna put everything on there today, in case members of the public were listening tonight. And the communication that I'm sending tomorrow, the links are embedded directly into it.
Ari, you good?
I hope to get good.
Yeah.
Once I find these places.
On slide four, the link at the left, the bottom left of the slide, will take you there.
Monitoring and protecting our progress, got it. I don't think it's live for me. I can't click it. Is it live for you?
Yeah.
All right, next question. I'm good.
Dave?
Sure, thank you very much for the presentation, Dr. Ruchi. I just had one question, and I don't want, I hate doing hypotheticals, but if we were to see, you know, continued positive direction here in these numbers, and I believe you mentioned that we might vote on the 21st, whether or not to start bringing back some of our special needs and younger students. If theoretically we were to vote on that day, or whenever we were to vote on that particular issue, what is the leg time? When, you know, we voted on, to vote on a Monday, would the kids be able to come back the next Monday? Would it be later on that week?
That would be the goal. That would be, that could be the goal, yep.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Next up, Bridgette.
Just a couple of questions, thank you. On this slide that's showing now, it talks about the incidents in Haverford and incidents in Delaware County. Given the kind of mobility of people and how close our communities are, is there a sense of whether our very local district compared to the county-wide figure kind of has more meaning or import in the decision process?
No, and even in the guidance, the Health Department is very careful to say that, you know, you should be monitoring border jurisdictions, you know, that that can make a difference for, you know, for some communities. So that might be one of the metrics that we say, is that something that we feel we need to be, you know, to be mindful of?
Okay, so in addition to rooting for Haverford's lower incidence, it wouldn't hurt to root for all the neighboring areas to also practice good hygiene and mask-wearing and social distancing so that we can all benefit together.
Any suggestions?
Yeah. And you mentioned the important question then of not just getting to a point where we consider opening, but what it will take to be able to stay open. And I think one of the things then that starts to become important in that consideration is actual cases of COVID that present in our staff and students. Can you remind the community just kind of what the thresholds for that might be? Because it's not a very big number where that would start to have implications about closing classrooms or schools.
It's not, and I have a feeling that may start to change a little bit as well. And that, an example that was just presented to us Monday, you could have a classroom where, you know, a student tests positive and a second student tests positive. Of course, those children are quarantining for 14 days. If the contact tracing does not indicate that student B possibly contracted that from student A, we will not be advised to shut that classroom down. And that's a change. If the contact tracing indicates that student B quite possibly contracted that from student A, they will. As soon as there's a belief on the part of the Health Department that contracting is occurring within the school, that's when they look at, you know, some types of closures. I've learned that the contact tracing is extremely important. Right now, they are hopeful that they can conclude that within 48 hours. But a lot of that depends on the availability of people and what they share in terms of where they've been and who they, with whom they have been.
Okay, and yeah, I imagine that as we start to see things like our high school sports teams and band and those activities taking place and the possibility that that contact tracing comes in, it's important for people to report and participate in that process so we, as a community, can make good and safe decisions about this reopening.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, Antoinette.
Great, thanks. First, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Ruchi, for bringing all these numbers to our attention. It's really helpful to have these guidelines and know what, you know, as a community, we need to work towards. So I said a couple of questions. So if we go to slide two, um, I'll just let you guys get there first because it's specific to that. So you look here on the instructional model, and it says, you know, when it's low, it's in-person, moderate, hybrid, high, virtual, or hybrid. But I guess I just want to be clear that for our district, in-person would also actually be hybrid, right? Because, because we, no matter what, we need the six feet of distancing. And so, you know, again, for everyone, if people haven't been able to watch every single board meeting at home, you know, Dr. Ruchi and her team put together a lot of pictures earlier in the summer about, you know, what our classrooms can handle as far as the distancing. And so even, even if we're in that low incidence, low PCR test positivity, that would still be hybrid because of that distancing.
As long as the six feet of social distancing remains a requirement, and that is a requirement, not just a recommendation.
Right.
That's a requirement. So as long as, thank you for raising that. As long as that remains a requirement, 100% of our population in the building at the same time is not possible for us in any school.
Right, yeah, exactly. So I just want to make sure the public understands that. Then when we're looking at this, we obviously do want as low possible of all of these numbers. But the requirement that we've gotten from the state says six feet of distancing. And if people want to go back and look at our, I think it was a June meeting or one of the early July meetings where the district presented to us a plan with three feet of distancing that we were going to look at. But before we were even able to vote on that, that's when the state came back and said, actually, you need six feet of distancing. So, you know, just so everyone understands that we've looked into this, or, you know, the district has presented an option with three feet of distancing with 100% of the student population in the schools. But that was sort of taken out of our hands, that we weren't even able to vote on it because of the state mandates. So I just have a couple, I have another question. So as, you know, folks have mentioned to us, the private schools in our area and many Catholic schools in our area are going back in-person, I think, either this week or next week. And so I wanted to know if there's been any discussion of whether looking at those schools and whether they have COVID in their schools, you know, come up in the next few weeks and have to shut down or anything like that is part of the data point?
Yes, we have, we do receive information, knowing exactly where, like if a particular school is involved. At our county meetings, we're not told, you know, exactly what school. Now, if one of the neighboring schools had to close, we could, you know, come to make an assumption out of that. So yes, we'll be taking a look at that. I can, as I said, you know, I can't speak for why, you know, anyone would choose not to adhere to the guidance. I'm sure they have their own reasons. There's, you know, speculation about the small size of the buildings and the, you know, the ability to be even more than six feet apart. I don't know.
Right, I guess my point is just, you know, if we, you know, come to this September 21st date and we're sort of on the edge of, you know, of some of these metrics, but we have the last three weeks of data, you know, showing that these private schools are open and that the Catholic schools are open, and they have not had to shut down or have had, you know, outbreaks or things like that of COVID, that I would hope that we take that into consideration. or have had, you know, outbreaks or things like that of COVID, that I would, I would hope that, that we take that into consideration. Because I think that with our six feet of distancing and the hybrid model, we could at least be sort of on, on a similar bar to those schools. And if they can operate for a few weeks without having, I would hope that, that we can try and do the same.
Particularly with our young, with our youngest students.
Right, exactly. Okay, thanks, those are my questions.
Laura?
Hi, thanks. I just had one comment and then a few questions. So I just wanted to reiterate a point about what you said where specifically if we're in that moderate band, we want to be as low in that band as possible before we reopen. And I, I'm reiterating this because of what Dr. Rubin and Dr. Brennan said at the Wallingford Swarthmore meeting a few weeks ago, which I found to be, I guess alarming, in the sense that if we reopen too early, what does it look like to open and then almost immediately close again? Which is a disaster, and in my opinion, sort of the, the worst case scenario is if we try to reopen too early. So, so I just wanted to reiterate that point that you made, that we really want to be in the, you know, as low in that band as possible before we reopen so that we can sustain our reopening for as long as possible for consistency for everybody. And then just thinking about what, you know, what colleges have been going through. So I think we can learn a little bit about what colleges have been going through. Many colleges have done, either suggested testing and provided some kind of testing or have provided mandatory testing, and they've been using that as a way to prevent the spread of COVID from cases before they enter the school. Is that something that we're considering?
That is something that has been discussed with some members of county council. I mean, there's a fee for that.
It's expensive, yeah.
It's very, you know, very expensive. So that, that has been discussed. And, and it becomes even more expensive because the guidance out of the Pennsylvania Department of Health is that school nurses should not be conducting the testing. So that's, you know, that would mean we would need another entity on boards to do that.
Okay, great. So I'm glad we're talking about it. I think it's worth the conversation and to consider, you know, what that might look like. And, and how helpful it could be. And then just, I think you mentioned it before, but I just wanted to be sure. I know that Dr. Rubin and Dr. Brennan are going to be joining us again for another meeting at some point in the future. Are they joining us for that, that meeting on the 21st?
I don't know yet. We're not, we're not the only ones that are potentially.
I know, I know, they're highly in demand. Okay, I was just curious.
If they, that perhaps they might want to do some kind of a, a short recording that a couple of the districts could use that week since, you know, everyone's looking to make some changes that way.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I mean, I just found their, their insight, because I watched some of the other school board meetings from other districts where they have spoken, and then having them speaking here, you know, I think we can all look at the data, but they're really the health experts and having them interpret the data for us, I think is extremely helpful. And for the community at large, because I think we all look at the data and we all see different things. So having them interpreting that for us in a public forum, I think is really helpful. So if they can join us, that would be amazing. But I know they are highly in demand, so anyway, those were my questions, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a little bit more. I figured out how the incidence rate works. Our positivity rate on case positivity is under 2%, but I do see now how this incidence rate is the number of people who tested positive times two, since we're 50,000. So week one, as of A28, there were 23 positive cases, times two, it's 46 and change incidence rate. What would be nice to know, and I don't know if this is possible, is what are those cases? I mean, if 23 people tested positive in this most recent week, as of A28, and all 23 people have comorbidity and live in a nursing home and haven't traveled outside of that nursing home, then I don't necessarily think that these numbers tell the whole story. I'd love to know if Chester County Health Department can help districts, not just us, better understand not the, you know, the number itself, but what do the numbers paint a picture of within your township? And I also know that in addition to looking at the countywide numbers, it's important for us to look at our, our neighbors' numbers as well. You know, we should look at Marple, we should look at Newtown Square, I'm sorry, Marple Newtown Square, Radnor, Lower Marion, Upper Darby, various districts that border us, the city of Philadelphia borders us, the Springfield borders us. So while our numbers might tell one story, other numbers could be better and tell another story for us that could help us state our case, especially since a lot of our residents do work in education and do work outside of our township.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Dr. Ruchi.
If I could have a quick follow-up on Ari's, are we getting any sort of contact tracing information from Chester County?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, what, what they have added to the report that they, that monitoring and protecting our progress, they are adding a section that they are titling exposure risks. So for example, I can tell you that within Delaware, you know, within Delaware County, you know, 72 or 69% of the cases have had close contact with a confirmed case. 34% traveling, 18% from restaurants, bars, gyms, salons, barber shops, 14% from weddings, funerals, concerts, sporting events, religious gatherings. So that, like, they are giving us where the source is for the event. But not, nothing more specific than that, but I can ask.
Thanks.
And by the way, of the 612 cases that are positive in Haverford Township, there's only 63 deaths. I mean, it's 10%. Yes, there's coronavirus out there. How lethal is it in Haverford Township?
I, I'm just, I'm just reporting with the guidance that, you know, that we've been given. As I started out, these are not my recommendations. You know, I'm trying to help the community see where the source is that, you know, that, that we're using and what we're, you know, what we're taking a look at. I can certainly take your, you know, take your questions back, but I, I am not in authority. Have I, do I have a comfort level with even taking, you know, a guess at, at an answer?
Not targeted, I didn't mean to target, if you felt that it was targeted at you, I'm just talking with the data that we have.
So we'll see what we can, see what we can find out, you know, I'll bring those, bring those questions.